Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of October 22nd. Tony, would you please call the role?
Torres, Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Here.
Kamai.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. All right, now if you're able, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, today's invocation will be provided by students who are visiting from our sister city of Okayama, and Councilmember Foley will tell us more.
Actually, these are the students we took to Okayama, not the visiting Okayama students.
Oh, who visited. I thought I said "from." I get it, okay. I was misinformed.
That's okay. During the summer, my husband and I chaperoned a group of students from Branham High School and Silver Creek High School to participate in a cultural exchange with our sister city, Okayama, Japan. During this exchange, these students lived with Japanese families, experienced the Japanese culture, and spent their days in tours organized by the Okayama International Department within the city of Okayama. We were joined on this trip with Kathy Sakamoto and her husband Jerry. Kathy leads the San Jose-Okayama Sister City Program. In 2027, we will be celebrating 70 years of this relationship. Joining them on this exchange were students from Taiwan, Korea, China, Guam, and Bulgaria. Each group of students was asked to present information about their hometown and country. Additionally, they were asked to provide some sort of entertainment, and some sang and some danced. Our girls showcased their martial arts and soccer skills. Our boys made the formal presentation complete with Japanese translation from one of our students. For my invocation this week, I have asked these students, Jasmine, Dani, Elaine, Alex, Agi, and Gracie, to perform the song they shared with the other students, perhaps you know it, "Do You Know the Way to San Jose." I want to thank these students. It was a blast chaperoning them, so much fun to go to Japan. I want to thank these students for taking time out of their really busy school schedules to be here to perform for us. Take it away.
Do you know the way to San Jose? I've been away so long, I may go wrong and lose my way. Do you know the way to San Jose? I'm going back to find some peace of mind in San Jose. LA is a great big freeway, put a hundred down and buy a car. In a week, maybe two, they'll make you a star. Weeks turn into years, how quick they pass. And all the stars that never were are parking cars and pumping gas. You can really breathe in San Jose, they've got a lot of space. There'll be a place where I can stay. I was born and raised in San Jose. I'm going back to find some peace of mind in San Jose. Fame and fortune is a magnet, it can pull you far away from home. With a dream in your heart, you're never alone. Dreams turn into dust and blow away. And there you are, without a friend. You park your car and ride away. I've got lots of friends in San Jose. Do you know the way to San Jose?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, we're on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Batra, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim Hindu American Heritage Month.
Good afternoon. Namaste. And a joyous, happy Hindu Heritage Month, which we are proclaiming today. Today, we gather not only to celebrate the rich tapestry of Hindu culture, but also to reflect upon the importance of Hinduism, a heritage that has woven itself intricately into the fabric of our diverse society. Hindu Heritage Month is a special time for the Hindu-American community to come together to honor the timeless wisdom, traditions, contributions of Hinduism. Hinduism, with its ancient roots dating back thousands of years, stands as one of the world's oldest religions, offering insights into the nature of existence and the paths to enlightenment. Hinduism, not merely a set of beliefs, it is a way of life for many of our residents. It fosters a sense of community, compassion, and a deep connection to the divine. Hindu-American community enriches our lives in countless ways, contributing to the cultural mosaic that makes the Bay Area a beacon of diversity. The values upheld by the Hinduism are principles that resonate with the very essence of our shared humanity. Through unity, understanding, and mutual respect, we can continue to build bridges that connect us all, irrespective of our background or beliefs. Once again, Happy Hindu Heritage Month to you all. May this month and the next be continuously filled with joy, reflection, and deep appreciation for the legacy that Hinduism imparts in our community. I have invited many of the organizations in Bay Area which work tirelessly to increase understanding of Hindu culture, Hindu traditions, Hindu values, while respecting the cultural values and ethnicities of all other nations or other heritages. We want to build a unified community which celebrates every culture, every ethnicity, every background. And today, I have about 20 of them here. That's what they work on year-round, celebrating these things. I'm sure I have missed inviting some of them. But the fact that you have 20 of them here, from a diverse ones which they support their activities, is showing you how I'm trying to create unity among Hindu population and the American population and all of the San Jose residents. So Mayor, I present to you this group of people to give the proclamation to, and they are going to give a benediction to give the blessings to all of us to promote our well-being. So priest, Swamiji, if you can start reading the... All of them are going to read at the same time, Mayor, so we're not going to take 20 times too many verses.
Thank you, Batraji, and Mayor inviting us, and we're happy to be here. So may the Almighty bless all of us, being Hindu Heritage Day in October. So very good month to be here and presence all of our Hindu communities here. And we especially thank our San Jose Mayor and our Arjun Batraji inviting all of us. May the Sand God, Mitra, Varuna, Arya, Hindra, Bruhaspati, and all providing Mahavisnu, and all the devatas shower their blessings upon us. Salutation to Brahma, salutation to Vayu. You are the forseignation of Brahma. Salutation to Brahma. I shall always obey by Dharma righteousness. I shall always speak the truth. May that protect us all. Om. Peace, peace, peace.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, we are ready. They all have the proclamation.
Great, so you're gonna receive the...
I'll just hold this one and he comes and stands with us.
Excellent. Welcome. We may need to crowd a little bit for the photo here. I don't know if we're able to do that. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, we can make it into...
There are two rows.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Make sure everybody can see the camera. All right, Councilwoman Dwan, if you'll join me at the podium, we will recognize Luis Valdez Leadership Academy.
So that way the podium don't get in the way. Perfect. Well, thank you so much for all being here. Today, I am honored to recognize Luis Valdez Leadership Academy, established in 2007, a now California distinguished school, for their exceptional commitment through leadership, excellence, responsibility, and resilience to prepare students for success beyond high school. The dedication of the teachers, the administrators, and support staff of Luis Valdez Leadership Academy have worked tirelessly to create an environment where students can thrive academically and personally. Their collaborative efforts and unwavering support have not only foster cultural excellence, but also have also been instrumental in earning an esteemed title of California Distinguished School. This recognition is a testament to the hard work and dedication of the entire school community, reflecting their deep investment in the future of their students. Again, I want to say thank you to everyone at Luis Valdez Leadership Academy who have made this school as amazing as it is today. Please give them a big applause. And I believe we have a speech from our representative from Luis Valdez Academy.
Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Sherry Segura, and I am the superintendent and CEO of the Foundation for Hispanic Education Schools. We are so honored, thank you so much, to be able to share this space with you, and our sincerest gratitude to Councilmember Doan for allowing us to be here today. We're celebrating the hard work and achievements and the dedication of our staff. This is a really important award for us because it is about closing the achievement gap. That is what we dedicate our time and energy to every single day to ensure that a ZIP code doesn't predict the outcome for any child. So thank you very much. I just want you to know, we serve 99% Latino students. We are located in East San Jose. 88% are socio-economically disadvantaged. They're labeled as that. But we know that they have a lot of gifts, and so we celebrate that, and we lean into that every single day. And I just want everyone here to know that when we invest in our youth, these are the outcomes that we can get from investing in our youth, is eliminating that achievement gap. And I would really like to just introduce Dr. Silva. He is the principal there. But I would like Mr. Luis Valdez, the namesake, and very famous namesake that we have. We're very fortunate to have him here today, so please, come up.
Thank you so much. This is a wonderful occasion to celebrate LBLA as a distinguished school. I can't think of anything more important in this life than education, especially education that asserts the wonder and the power and the privilege of biodiversity in the human race. We all have something to give. The Creator has endowed us all with the gift of genius in different ways, and we bring that genius to the table to create a better life and a better world for all. It's been my privilege to grow up in San Jose. I went to grammar school in Evergreen, graduated from Janeslake High School and San Jose State University. So San Jose is literally my home in that sense. But it was with wonder that I now view this growing megalopolis and know its significance in the world. And so, I'm very proud to be here to celebrate the evolution of LBLA as an institution in our beloved community.
here to celebrate the evolution of LBLA as an institution in our beloved community, and to also spur forward the city of San Jose to achieve its greatness through its young people, through its neighborhoods, through its high schools, through its educational institutions. May we all bond together with the promise of the future, the promise of democracy, to keep the world alive and open and fair to everybody, especially in this election year. Que viva San Jose, que viva Kamala Harris, adelante todo el pueblo!
Thank you so much. Are you receiving the commendation?
Yes.
Here we are. Here we are.
Thank you.
Thanks for the important work you're doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for doing everything you can for the city.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you again.
My notes are...
Thank you.
All right, and on to our final ceremonial item. Councilmember Ortiz, please join me at the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim Lights On After School Day. Looks like we're inviting folks to come on down. Hey.
Congratulations, you guys. Yeah. All right, for the moment, everybody's been waiting for... No, just joking. Good afternoon, everyone. This Thursday is the twenty-fifth annual Lights On After School Day, a day to celebrate after-school programs and the essential work that they do for our families. For our working families, after-school programs are a lifeline. They provide structure and childcare for the afternoon hours, and give students structure, safety, and new opportunities to grow, play, and learn together. San Jose is home to many incredible after-school programs, some of whom are in attendance today. The city is also a provider itself through the PRNS Department's ROCK program, serving students at twenty elementary and middle schools, and offering homework assistance, recreation, and of course, STEAM education programming. To show the immense gratitude the city has to the educators, supervisors, and workers who make our city's after-school programs possible, it is my honor to present this proclamation of this Thursday as Lights On After School Day 2024. And now, I'd like to please invite PRNS Director John Sisarelli to speak and introduce a video highlighting the great work of the ROCK program.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. Good afternoon, everybody. As you mentioned, it's the twenty-fifth year anniversary of this program. This is a national program. It's the only national program like it, so we'll be celebrating with over a million other people and students on Thursday across eight thousand locations in the country to amplify, amplify the voices of our youth and, and the importance of the program. And I think it's interesting that the one, the commendation just before this was talking about, right, the investment in our youth, the importance of educating our youth. That's exactly what these people standing behind you, behind me, I should say, do every day. We have over eighteen hundred young people enrolled across thirty-three programs right now in the city. We've, we've been operating after-school programs for about three decades, although the current program, which is ROCK After School, is about fifteen years old now. We've distributed more than five million dollars in scholarships to youth and their families so that they can access programs like this after-school, have a safe place to be where the lights are on. And so I want you to join us and our partners, for example YMCA, Catholic Charities, Think Together, the County Office of Education, and many other partners on this Thursday. A couple fun facts. Also this month, the Santa Clara County Office of Education has their College and Career Month, and in March, we'll be hitting up all the council members, of course, like we do every year for our National Education Association's Read Across America program that we do in partnership with the library. It's a really fun program. We can go sit with the kids and read a fun book to them, and so I want to show you a video of what it's like and a day in the life. You might even see some of the people standing behind me on, on the video, so if we can queue that up, thank you.
So this is the ROCK After School Program. Soon as the kids get out, as soon as the bell rings, they come here and have a good program where they could have fun and hang out with their friends.
Some of the parents, you know, they're working late, anything like that, whatever it may be. We're here to keep an eye on the kids, make sure they're engaged.
I like running the structure program, but at the same time, like, you know, let the kids be kids, let them have fun, let them hang out.
Hey, that's, that's what the program's for. We get to play, we get to do some crafts, we get to eat, you know? That's the cool part.
I've had groups of kids that come and return year after year, and every year, I see them again and again, and it's, they're growing, they're changing, and it's just, it's really, it's rewarding to see their progress in different social activities and situations, and seeing their arts grow. I see a lot of kids practicing their instruments here all the time. It's just, it's, it's a lot of fun. I really love working with these kids.
We provide a service where like, they enjoy coming, because I've, I've had a couple kids like, "Oh, Mr. Edgar, why didn't you come yesterday?" Like, you know, "I want to come to ROCK." Like, that makes me think like, oh, they want to come to ROCK and not like, "Oh, man, not another day at ROCK."
The thing I like most about this after-school program is because the teachers are very nice, and I got, I got a good amount of friends.
Some of my favorite things are...
I like to go outside and play with my friends.
When we get to go outside.
And when we have to have a little craft.
What I like the most about my after-school program is probably homework time, just because it's like, it's peaceful and it's quiet, and then I get my work done.
I like how we have fun and like doing crafts.
My favorite part would be the staff, because I've known Mr. Steven for, I think, two years now, and he's, so like, that's my favorite part, the staff.
They're really nice.
Mr. Steven is a really cool guy. He's someone that you can trust.
He's super awesome, and I don't want to leave next year, because then he's going to leave.
I like playing on the playground because you can go on the swing, you can play with your friends.
You should go to the after-school program because it's really fun, and you can meet a lot of new people over there.
Thank you. And you can see, it's as much fun for our staff as it is for the kids. That's why they're standing here. This is what we do. This is what we love to do in Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services, so thank you. Councilmember Ortiz and the City Council are recognizing this day.
Thank you. One more round of applause for the ROCK program. Now, I kindly ask the Mayor to please present the proclamation.
I have one item I would request that the council vote to add to the consent calendar. That's item 2.17, which is adjustments in city council appointments of committees, boards, and commissions. It requires a two-thirds vote of approval to be placed on today's consent calendar. May I have a motion to take a vote to add it to the consent calendar? Thank you. Tony, can we please vote on that? And I'm sorry, let me ask before we vote, did we have any comment cards on that item? On 2.17? Okay, we're not on consent yet. This is just on whether or not we should add 2.17 to consent. Okay, then let's vote.
I'm still waiting on one. I don't know who it is, though.
It's okay, she's in the back. I think we have two thirds.
Oh, I did. I was looking. I didn't see that she was gone. Motion passes nine with Davis absent.
Okay, great. So 2.17 will be added to the consent calendar today. It's, and should be, that does attach to the agenda. Does anyone else have any changes to the printed agenda for today? Okay, I'm not seeing any others. Let's move on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. The city manager has something to report coming out of closed session.
Thank you, Nora. I am very pleased to announce unanimous city council confirmation of my selection of Paul Joseph as our new permanent Chief of Police. Paul will assume the position on October 28th, 2024. Chief Joseph will lead the department with an annual operating budget of five hundred and forty-three million, with one thousand one hundred and seventy-two sworn officers and five hundred and seventy civilian employees. He will lead one of the leanest and most efficient major city police agencies in the country. He'll be responsible for the core services, including crime prevention and community education, investigative services, regulatory services, response to calls for service and patrol support, and the department's strategic support. As we all know, the Chief of Police position plays an important role in the leadership of the city. Chief Joseph will continue working with the community, city leaders, and stakeholders to continuously evaluate and evolve how public safety services are provided in San Jose. He is also a courageous and collaborative leader who is unafraid to try new policing techniques, engage in important dialogue with our community, and build deep, lasting relationships, and accept constructive criticism. Chief Joseph brings over thirty years of broad and progressive law enforcement experience to the role. He joined the San Jose Police Department as a police officer in December 1994, progressing through the ranks to his present role as Acting Chief of Police. Chief Joseph previously served as the Assistant Chief of Police with wide responsibility for the department's operations. As a police captain, he was the commanding officer of the department's Western Patrol Division, and as a police lieutenant, he worked in the homicide unit, robbery unit, and patrol divisions. In his tenure with the San Jose Police Department, he launched innovative initiatives, including the Mission Street Recovery Station DUI pilot, and helped design the Mobile Crisis Assessment Team. Chief Joseph is a member of the California State Bar. He holds a Juris Doctor from the University of California College of the Law, San Francisco, and a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from California State University, Northridge. He also attended numerous law enforcement leadership training programs, including the Police Executive Leadership Institute administered by the Madrid City Chief Association, among other significant trainings. Please join me in congratulating Chief Joseph, who is joined by his wife, Judy Joseph, stepdaughters Katie and Grace, and stepson Justin. We're also joined by just a few of our amazing and hard-working men and women of the police department. Would you all please stand to, to recognize your support of Chief Joseph? And I'd like to ask Chief Joseph to come down to the podium to say a few words. Thank you.
I did all that? Jennifer McGuire, city manager, I really want to thank you and your staff in the city manager's office for trusting me with this enormous responsibility for undertaking a comprehensive search, a nationwide search. I know I competed against some pretty qualified people. There were a lot of great people in the, in the industry, and, and I'm honored to have been selected from amongst that group. To the mayor and the council, thank you for confirming that choice. I pledge to always work with you to solve the various issues that it is that we're going to face. For the community, I know there were voices in the community that, that spoke to all of you and spoke to the city manager in support of me. I know I wouldn't be here without that, and I know I would not be able to address all the issues that we face as a community without support from that community. Lastly, you know, it's, it's a one-team approach here, all the departments in the city and the city manager's office, but we have a team at the police department, and, and I got to say, I'm honored. I'm honored that members of my team are here today. That's very moving to me, that they're all here. I will have no success without them. They're the ones that make the difference in the police department far more than I do, so thank you, guys, for coming.
Congratulations, chief. I'll just say on behalf of the council, thank you for thirty years of service to our community. You've done a tremendous job, and we are very lucky that you want to continue to serve this city, and I know you're going to do a great job of keeping our community safe, looking after our officers, making the department strong and effective, and we're just, we're just very lucky to have you, so congratulations again to you and your family. All right, we're going to move on now to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that members of the council would like to pull from consent?
Yes, I, I would like to pull item four, 2.4.
2.4, okay. Councilor Duwan would like to pull 2.4. Any others?
Mayor, I'd like to pull 2.14.
Yep, okay, got that.
Just for a comment.
Great. And then I have a memo on item 2.17, so, 2.17, so I will pull that. That was the one you all were kind enough to add to consent today. Any others? Okay, so we will take them one at a time. We're going to go in order. Councilor Duwan, do you want to comment or make a motion on 2.4?
Yes, the reason I pulled the item 2.4 is I want to bifurcate the mayor and council excuse absence, and I want to make sure that we vote separately for Councilmember Omar Torres' absent request.
Okay. Do we need a vote of the council to bifurcate, or is that...
I don't think so.
Is that at my discretion? How would we do that?
No, I think we, I don't think you need to make a motion. Part of the motion would be to bifurcate and then take the action on one, so...
Okay, so that could be included in the motion, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. So there's a request to bifurcate 2.14, but we don't have a motion yet, so that's noted. Councilor Foley, do you want to comment on 2.14?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to pull this item to commend the Department of Transportation staff on their work to implement the Transit First policy adopted in 2022, which I was a huge proponent of. As our city grows, the need for high-quality, fast, and frequent public transportation is going to be critical. While VTA operates the buses, those buses operate on our street network, which is why we adopted the first Transit First policy to acknowledge our responsibility to ensure transit runs smoothly and quickly. What we are approving here is the deployment of systems that optimizes signal timing to give buses green lights when possible and minimize their time waiting at red lights. Working with our VTA partner to make transit faster ensures that public transportation is a more desirable option for travelers, aligning with many of our city's goals around climate smart and reducing congestion. I'd also like to take this opportunity to challenge, challenge other agencies with roadways in Santa Clara County to also adopt Transit First policies. For example, the county has jurisdiction over expressways, but unfortunately does not have an adopted Transit First policy. The city of San Jose is a leader in this space, so I'd like to recognize that while also encouraging other agencies to join us to make Santa Clara County a more transit-friendly area. Thank you.
Great.
And I will move the consent calendar with the bifurcation requested.
Okay, bifurcating 2.4.
Bifurcated the Councilmember Torres portion of 2.4.
Specifically.
That would be 2.4. A will be its own separate item, and your motion includes B through F.
Yes.
Okay.
And I was going to comment on item 2.17. Councilmember, hoping you're including my memo... Hoping you're including my memo in that. Okay, great. Comment there just being given, no, that's okay. I'll just, just for the public, since we just added this today under orders of the day. I brought forward a recommendation to the council that we reassign Councilor Torres's appointments to various other council colleagues, given that Councilor Torres has recently been absent from all committee, commission, and board meetings that I'm aware of over the last two weeks. I think that the public deserves to have other council colleagues fill in in those roles, so that's why I've brought this forward. These would be, if approved, in effect until I bring forward my annual appointment memo to the council for consideration in January. So this would be a temporary appointment, reassignment, and appointment for the commissions and committees and boards where Councilor Torres has been serving. There's a full list in the agenda item. So that is included in the motion. Unless there are any other questions or comments, I think we can proceed with a vote. I'm not seeing any hands up. Why don't we actually start with public comment if we have any?
This is on item 2.4, so I'm going to go ahead and take it now rather than on the vote for 2.4A, just in case. So Melissa, come on down.
Hello. Thanks for taking my comment. I'm a small business owner on Luna Park District 3, and so I just wanted to bring up representation. I do look forward to moving forward in that area with representation, other than Omar Torres's office. So I definitely look forward to moving on. We need to progress and not stand still. So I thank you, Mr. Mayhan, for bringing that up. Thank you.
Back to council.
Okay, thank you. Just want to do a vote. Tony, what should we take first?
This is the vote on the, all of the items except for 2.4A.
Okay.
Motion passes nine zero with Davis absent. And now we'll go on to 2.4A, and I don't, we're waiting on a motion on that one.
I think it was moved to be voted on, to bifurcate the vote. So now we need to vote on 2.4A.
Now 2.4A, but we don't have a motion to approve or not approve 2.4A. We had a motion to approve everything else. So now 2.4A is up for discussion and motion.
Got it. Okay. Do we have further discussion or a motion on 2.4A?
I move to approve on the 2.4A.
Okay. Do we have a second? You moved to approve 2.4?
A to be voted on, right?
We need, we're going to vote on it. The item's up now. We need a motion on whether or not to approve or reject. Councilor Jimenez?
Yeah, Councilmember Duwan, I suspect that now that we've isolated 2.4A, now it sits with you as it relates to what you want to do with it. So I don't know what your intent is, but...
Well, I want to make sure that we move it forward so that we can make a separate vote, right?
It's been separated out now. We're taking up that item. Now we're waiting on a motion.
Motion to move it forward for vote.
But...
Is that a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
The motion to approve is the unexcused, right?
Correct.
I just want to make...
Let's clarify this, please. My motion is to make sure that we vote on Councilmember Torres' absence excuse. So now we can vote on it yes or no.
Okay. So separate it out. We need a motion to approve or reject. Because you bifurcated.
I, okay, I motioned to reject his excuses.
Okay, so you're moving a no vote on item 2.4A. Okay. To reject. Yes, Councilor Jimenez.
Just point of order, there was a memo that was submitted, so this is not submission of your memo, or it is submission of your memo?
To include my, exactly what I stated on my memo, right?
Okay. Why don't you just move your memo? Would that work, councilmember?
Yes, that'll work.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, I'm not hearing a second. Do we have another motion? Councilmember Batra. All right, we need a motion.
Mayor, you need a motion on what?
You moved your memo. It did not get a second, so we need another motion.
I'll move to approve the item granting the unexcused absence.
Okay. Wait a second.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay. Look, I'll go ahead and make clear, I'm going to go ahead and say what I said to the press outside. I'm not happy with the situation we're in. It's not fair to the community. You heard that from a small business owner in the district. I believe Councilor Torres is holding his seat hostage and denying representation to the 100,000 residents of District 3. We've all called on him to resign. He should resign. At the same time, after getting some insight from the city attorney, I personally am not interested in litigating whether or not he was sick two weeks ago. So I will be supporting the motion and moving forward. Should he continue to request excused absences, I personally will want to hear a better explanation for what the illness is. I'm going to leave it at that. This is a difficult and unique situation. We've got to move forward as best as we can. Situation we haven't been in before. So there's a motion. I don't know if we have any other comments, or if we can move to a vote. There was a second. Councilor Cohen. Okay. Let's vote.
So, Mayor, to be clear, we are voting yes means we are excusing his, or we are accepting his request for excuse, right?
He submitted a memo requesting that two weeks ago he was ill, and as has been the practice of the council, the request is that we accept his excuse as illness for missing the meeting two weeks ago. Whether or not the council should choose to do that for multiple meetings is a different matter.
Fine.
Okay. That's what we're voting on.
Motion passes eight to one with Davis absent and Duwan voting no.
Okay. Thank you. Let's keep going. We have approved the rest of the consent calendar, so we are on to item 3.1, which is the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report today. The Second Annual Neighborhoods Conference, called Empowering Residents to Build Safer, Stronger Communities, will take place this Saturday, October 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. right here at City Hall in our rotunda. The Annual Neighborhoods Conference brings together residents, neighborhood leaders, and city representatives to share resources and collaborate on the ways to improve our neighborhoods. The conference underscores our commitment to supporting residents and making San Jose's neighbors safer, cleaner, and more connected by fostering partnerships between the city and its communities, and furthers our city council focus area of cleaning up our neighborhoods. Organized by the Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services Department, the event is part of Beautify SJ's ongoing efforts to promote cleaner, safer neighborhoods through initiatives like community cleanups, blight reduction, dumpster days, and graffiti removal. Last year's conference drew nearly 250 attendees, sparking meaningful connections and empowering neighborhoods with resources to create positive change. This year aims to build on that success with even more opportunities for collaboration. I invite you to join me and other San Jose neighbors this Saturday in the rotunda. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your report. We're on to item 3.3. This is the city manager's annual report. And we have a presentation. We'll turn to Jim as soon as he's ready.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Jim Shannon. I'm the city's budget director. I'm joined up here by Assistant Director Bonnie Duong and our financial status coordinator, Selena Ubondo. Together, we're going to provide a brief overview of the city's 2324 annual report, which complies with the city charter and is a city manager's vehicle for summarizing and analyzing the city's budget performance for the preceding year. The report provides a technical comparison of budget to actual revenues and expenditures in each budgeted fund for last year, and its appropriate explanations concerning material differences between those amounts. It also provides the city council with a comparison of estimated to actual ending fund balances for all funds, as well as a summary of the 2324 year-end reserves by fund. Based on the analysis of prior year performance, updated information for the current fiscal year, and past direction from the city council, the annual report recommends a number of 2425 budget adjustments for your consideration. And the report here is going to highlight, just, the presentation is just going to highlight a few things from the report, but just wanted to emphasize that this sort of massive document that you see before you, probably not everybody's going to read every page of that document, but I really want to emphasize the process by which we go through to put this report together is really important. So the work that the finance department does, that the departments do, that the budget office does, is sort of to go through all of the city's funds, figure out what's going on, catch the small issues and problems now before they become bigger issues later on down the line, is really the value of what this report gives us. So I just wanted to highlight that for everybody here. So moving on, revenues generally performed as expected, and overall expenditures ended the year within or below budget across all of those funds. Looking in the general fund specifically, we had an extremely small surplus, and most other funds ended the year with balances at or above the estimated level. Just looking at the general fund, when we look at the actual available general fund fund balance, the variance was 0.05% of the combined budget for modified revenues and expenditures. That's about as close as we ever want to be. So it was really, really tight this year, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We do have a number of actions, as I said, to close out the last fiscal year, adjust 2425 as necessary, and in accordance with Council Policy 1-18, we recognize some grants and reimbursements, and we address a few urgent needs, a couple in the general fund and others in some special and capital funds. A real quick spin-through for some of the economic indicators here that we keep an eye on from one year to the next. So pretty, you know, a slowly growing economy with some sort of, you know, a little bit of warning lights that we need to keep an eye on. So employment, good news is we had growth, but it was very, very slight, so just 0.3% growth in jobs from year-end June in 2024 to 2223. Unemployment rate did tick up a little bit, so we're at 4.1% at the end of June versus 3.7% the prior year. Residential real estate is doing decently, so the properties, the changeover was down a little bit year-over-year by 3.3%, but the single-family home price was up by 6.3%. Hopefully, we see that number of transactions go up a little bit as interest rates start to come down. Construction, activity valuation, private development, and rehabilitation work was up by about 22% almost year-over-year. That was driven by increase in residential and industrial, but a decrease in commercial. Looking at some of the major general fund revenues, this is just some of them we wanted to highlight here. So good news is property tax continued pretty good growth. So we have a 6% year-over-year growth for property tax receipts. That's good news. That's the single biggest source of revenue in the general fund, and it's a reflection of that, you know, strong real estate market still. I think commercial, we'll sort of see where that hits us in the upcoming years. But really, the thing that made this year-end close process challenging was sales tax. So we ended about $10 million down year-over-year, and just about that much below our estimate for the year, for 2324. It was really challenging. We had, when we look at quarterly sales tax information, all of those quarters for the last fiscal year, when you compare them to the prior year, range from a growth of 7.7% to a decrease of 9.9%. And that fourth quarter really was down quite low. It was that 9.9%, I think, was, 9.3% was the fourth quarter drop. So that was the reason why we sort of ended the year a little bit lower. What's going to make that challenging is to make sure we make our budget targets for the current year. So we had assumed, we put the budget together for sales tax, that we needed about a 3.5% growth in sales tax, based on where we thought year-end estimates were going to end. But because we ended lower, we're going to need a growth rate of about 5.6%. So that's going to be something that we're going to have to keep an eye on as we go through fiscal year. Couple other notes here. Utility tax is a little bit up. Business tax is a little bit down. Real property transfer tax, our Measure E, is down year-over-year, but we expected that. So about $50.7 million is where it came in at, and our budget was $50 million. So that's, at least that's about where it was, and we expect that to be about the same this year and hopefully grow a little bit in the out-years. Franchise fees, looks like it's a big year-over-year increase, but it's just really a reflection of the timing of payments of when PG&E pays us that franchise fee. So they sort of adjusted when that happens. And so now 2324 and onward are sort of going to be more regular disbursements. And a little bit increased for fees, fees, rates, and charges, and our TOT had 6% growth, although we're still below pre-pandemic levels of about $20 million. So again, getting into the general fund, we have, we ended the year about $24.5 million of additional fund balance above the estimate that we used to build the 2425 adopted budget. And that's what our goal is, to try to make sure that we capture all the estimated year-end fund balance and then spend that in 242025. That's part of our process. So it started at 2420, 24.5 million, but when we adjust for the technical adjustments to rebudget funds for projects and programs already in process and some other technical adjustments, the real amount drops to about $2.4 million. And as I said, that's super, super small. It's 0.05% of the combined budget for revenues and expenditures. That was primarily all generated by expenditure savings. Because that sales tax number came in lower, our revenues overall were a little bit below our estimate. So we really generated that by savings, mostly within the citywide expenses category. And the high-level overview here is how we are recommending to disperse the additional ending fund balance in the general fund. So again, we have that 24.5 as our starting point. We take away 22.1 for the rebudget and cleanup actions that are required to continue projects and programs already in process. So then we got our $2.4 million. Of that, we're recommending about $1.6 million for a category called Required Technical Rebalancing Actions, which are actions that align already-approved revenue estimates and expenditures with the most current tracking information, reallocate funding for ongoing appropriations based on updated needs, correct technical issues in the 2425 budget, or comply with actions previously authorized by the city council. And then we've got a net zero category of grants, reimbursements, and fees where we're recognizing $3.3 million of revenues and a corresponding amount for offsetting expenditures. And then we do have a couple of budget adjustments that the city manager is recommending to, for council to take action on now in advance of the proposed budget, when we normally would bring new items forward, and we'll talk about those in just a moment. So here is a partial list of the number of actions that are in the annual report. And when you see a negative number here, again, that's a reminder that we are spending the fund balance. So we're, for example, in the first item, our general liability claims. We are taking $5 million of the fund balance and adding it to the general liability claims appropriation to make sure we have some capacity for the city to pay out settlement claims. We also had some year-end transactions at the end of the year for some workers' comp claims that we had to effectively charge to general liability, so we need to reimburse that appropriation. I do expect we'll probably have to revisit this as part of the mid-year budget review to make sure there's sufficient capacity in that appropriation. 1.9 million for the Coyote Creek project. This money, I was, we actually got from Valley Water last year, but we didn't appropriate, so we're going to appropriate it this year to continue that work. We have another $1 million for our contingency reserve to make sure we're in compliance with Council Policy 1-18, making sure we have at least 3% of budgeted general fund expenditures in our contingency reserve. We've got $250,000 to do some election polling to get us ready for the '26 election cycle as council has given us direction to look at parks, potential parks measures, infrastructure measures, or other new revenue measures. And so we need some polling there to work on that. Now, you'll notice, that's a lot more than $2.4 million of fund balance, right? So we are spending more fund balance than we have because we have to make some of these fixes. And so the next items that are positive are things that are adding to our fund balance, and we're sort of bringing forward actions as part of the annual report earlier than we otherwise would have. These are things we would have done probably as part of the mid-year budget review or as part of the proposed budget process to recognize sufficient amounts of ending fund balance, but we need to sort of generate some savings here to be able to pay for some of the actions that we know we need to do. And so we do have some savings of $2.3 million almost for the elections and ballot measures appropriation. Because we're not doing a ballot measure in this November's election, we have some savings there. So we're taking 250 of that savings and putting it toward polling. The rest of that is going toward fund balance. When we, we have a reserve currently in the general fund to potentially buttress ourselves against FEMA not reimbursing us all we think we're owed for the COVID response. However, because we've got, after some reconciliation, we have some additional fund balance in the emergency reserve fund. We can put that reserve, instead of in the general fund, we can have that being in the emergency reserve fund. Also bring back into the general fund some money that we had ceded to the emergency reserve fund in prior year, so that's another $2 million there. And then we do have some late fees in the water utility fund, which are unrestricted in their use, and we can bring that into the general fund. So those actions there provide us a little bit of capacity to do some of the maneuvering we need to do to make sure that we comply with council direction, and provide us a little bit of capacity for these two urgent fiscal improvements. little bit of capacity for these two urgent fiscal and program needs. One of them, the first one, is for, adding 4.0 animal health technician positions in the public works department within the Animal Care Services Division to increase our surgical capacity for spay and neuters. We want to make sure that we can get through those animals and get them spayed and neutered that are in the facility, so they can get turned around for adoptions quicker, and to also increase our capacity for our trap neuter and release program. So, we want to bring those forward now, instead of waiting until, uh, July for the new budget to start. And then we have $350,000 for a, some temporary staffing in the city manager's office to drive leadership around policy development, coordination, and execution, both within the organization and with ex, external partners, including the host committees, to making sure that we are maximizing the potential for those sporting events like FIFA and the Super Bowl and the NCAA men's basketball tournament, to make sure we can maximize our economic growth oper, opportunities, which council, I know, is also very interested in based on the past budget direction. So, we have those, we're bringing forward now in advance of the budget process, given their importance. And just a couple of notes on some special capital funds. So, looking at some revenues here, the yellow bars are our construction and conveyance, our CNC tax, so this is generated from real estate transactions. While we are down from the epic high of '21, '22, we did grow a little bit in '23, '24, and I think we ended the year with, with another, what did I say in my notes, another two, 3.2 million above where our estimate was. So, that gives us a little bit of capacity across the parks funds and the fire and the library capital funds. And then our, are the, the darker bars there are our building and structure and construction excise tax, which is down from some of the prior year highs, but did perform a little bit better at year-end than we had anticipated, so that gave about $6 million or so to the traffic capital program, which will provide some needed buttressing, since that is a pretty tight, tight program there. And then we do have in the airport operating fund, so we, we did have passenger activity that did drop a little bit from where we were the prior year, so we're down at 11.9 versus the 12.1. The adopted budget did assume 12.5 million of passenger growth, but the airports, we're looking at that, and I know Councilmember Batra had sort of a similar question when we did the bi-monthly financial report last, last week. We don't expect to hit that estimate anymore, kind of based on where July through September data is. We're probably going to be somewhere around where we were last year, maybe a touch lower. I think the good news is that the airport budget's, you know, pretty defensively, so I think that decrease in passenger levels are probably still going to be good from a revenue perspective and a cost perspective, and the airlines are responsible for making sure that they meet all their costs for the terminal operations and airfare operations. So, we, we should still be good there, although it is tough to see that passenger level go, go down. And then the rest of the document has a number of other adjustments for cleanup actions, to reconcile funds, you know, we do this across all 140 funds, not just the general fund and a handful of capital funds. The book covers the entire city's, city's budget. We have a number of, of adjustments to recognize grants and reimbursements, a few project accelerations and, and adjustments throughout the different traffic, or the different capital programs. And with that, I think we're just about done. And I just want to, maybe just before I thank everybody, just to, just to kind of remind, you know, kind of where we see the fund balance was very, very tight, we're starting off in a little bit of a defensive position for some of our revenue. So, this is going to be a tight budget year, getting through '23, '20, '24, and heading into '24, '25, so we're going to need to really be sort of really careful even more on tracking and monitoring our revenues and expenses. We do have another fund balance target that we need to hit for '24, '25. We assume as part of the forecast, we have $30 million of fund balance on an on, ongoing basis, and so, starting a little bit lower on the revenue perspective is going to make that challenging. We'll, we'll see it in the next item, but we, you know, the liquidation of prior carryover encumbrances of that $7.6 million in the general fund, that's going to help us meet our current fund balance target for '24, '25. So, we're not really going to get any new, new money, but does give us a little bit of, of a head start to make sure we can meet at least this year's forecast perspective. So, just wanted to provide that, that context, and we'll be providing updates throughout the year through our bi-monthly financial reports, the mid-year and other processes. And I'll just close by thanking my awesome management team there, the incredible work that the budget office does and the departments do to put this report together, and with that, we are available for questions.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate the work you and the budget office do. Thank you to you and the city manager and everybody for bringing forward the annual report. Do we have public comment, Tony?
I have no cards.
Okay. Go back to the council, I see a few hands. We'll start with Councilmember Batra.
Jim, thank you very much for that massive report that you put together, and since it still shows a little positive amount, I continue to admire the level of accuracy which you have been able to predict things at, and the only time I'm going to wish that you're wrong is when you start predicting deficits, which you're not, so I'm glad of that. I do have a couple of questions to clarify. One, the sales tax down, is it probably being affected by the more switch to the online purchases? Any idea, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, when the Supreme Court sort of allowed for more of the online sales tax to be collected by local municipalities in 2018, it's so-called the Wayfair decision, I think we started to gain some of that back. I think what we're more likely seeing, and Selena can, can weigh in, or my colleagues in OED can weigh in, I think we're just seeing a little bit of the softening of the economy. Sales tax grew pretty strongly post, post-COVID, and I think we always expected that to taper off somewhat. You know, the, it's been a little bit erratic, but it's probably reflective a little bit of some of the layoff notices that we've been seeing, just sort of the overall softening and the, the tech sector is going to have a little bit of a spillover. And so, we also are seeing slowing in inflation. So, as in, when inflation was high, you know, that is good in some respects for some of the city revenue sources, because that means the revenue is higher also. So, we're starting to see some of the backing off of the inflation growth, which also is going to impact the, the sales tax numbers too. But I think it's more overall, sort of a softening of the economy, I think. Yeah, and I think one, some of the key indicators are the transportation categories and the construction categories look like they're sort of leading the way in the declines.
Okay. And, and do we get all of the sales tax for any purchases done through online for consumption in San Jose?
We get, so in San Jose, if the, if the business is in San Jose as a retailer, for the most part, we will get those sales taxes. Yeah, you can do, Selena will do it.
Hello, I'm Selena Ubondo. So, online transactions are actually captured in the county pool, and the county pool is distributed out to the different jurisdictions within the county. We, San Jose receives about, it ranges, but it's about 50% of the total county pool. So, we definitely, it's different than if you just go to the store across the street, we'll get 100% of that sales tax. County pool, you only get roughly about 50%, but also, we're getting a portion of if you live in Santa Clara, if you live elsewhere. It's just the way that the online transactions are done.
How does it work if you, if you are a, you are buying an online transaction, but they in San Jose? Different?
No, I think that's the same, that's the same. It just, it all goes through the county pool, because it's done by point of destination instead of point of sale.
Okay. And the construction revenue, where we show, are the constructions, money shown there 1.3 billion, is that for the completed construction projects? The value of the completed project, but anything which is in progress doesn't show up in there, right?
That's the valuation of the project when they pull the building permit. So, there's a schedule by which the, the valuation of that project is kind of part of the building permit, and then they, they pay the, the tax based on that valuation in the building, the building permit.
Now, does this include the projects which are affordable homes, which don't pay any property tax?
Yes.
The valuation includes?
Affordable housing does pay construction taxes.
Okay, so, okay. And the employment figure, is that a snapshot at the end of the year, or is it the average? Or?
That is as of, as of June, so the number of, of currently-employed people at the end of June of '24 and June of '23.
Okay. And, and is it a pretty accurate, or it's a sort of a degree of range of error?
And it's the same level of data that is reported in all the economic circles, so I'm not sure how accurate it is, but it is accurate enough that sort of everybody relies on it from the local levels all the way up to the federal level.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I make the motion to accept the report. Dan?
Great. Thank you. Okay, we have a few more hands up before we vote, so we'll go to Councilmember Cohen next.
Thank you. I, first, I just want to thank Jim, Bonnie, the whole team for the responsible handling of our budget. I always feel we're in good hands when I, when I see these reports every year. We're definitely, you know, have to be very cautious going forward, because things are not quite, you know, booming, but I, I feel like at least we have a handle on it, and I'm glad for the pre-warning of some of these softenings that we're seeing. Wanted to just sort of ask a little further clarification first on the, on the question about sales tax. So, sales, I would, I would argue 3% change is probably a flattening, a leveling of our sales tax because of the big increase that we've had in the last few years. Is that a, a, another way, a way of looking at it, that we've, we're still higher than we were a couple of years ago in sales tax? Is that true?
For sure, we are higher than where we were several years back, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because I was watching some, a presentation last week from Chris Thornburg about the economy, and he's pointing out that if you look at trend lines, retail and, and sales, people purchasing, consumer purchasing is actually pretty high overall, and so, just, I, we're going to have to, we're going to see some leveling and dropping of that probably naturally, so we're, we're, you know, given, even though the people out there, there's a, there's a sentiment that the economy is softening or is in trouble, all the indicators such as consumer spending are actually up year-over-year for the last several years. So, I just want to, you know, well, I'm certainly not saying we shouldn't ignore this, this is an important trend, I just also, it's important to understand that this might not, may not be, you know, some kind of indication of a future significant softening, but we're probably due for some leveling off or small drop.
For sure, I, I would agree with that for sure. I think, you know, it's been a little bit stickier, the transition from services to goods has been a little bit stickier than I thought it would be, so we've had higher sales tax for longer, but I do expect the softening. There's also a fun chart that I showed when I talked to other groups, I don't show it to city council very often, but, you know, a sales tax as a percentage of California spending is, been declining for 40 years. And so, we had a little brief respite in the COVID where we ticked back up, but I do think that will continue to, or the California State Department of Finance continues to see that as a proportionally decreasing revenue as, as a percentage of the economy in California on a going-forward basis, so it's just something to watch out for.
Right, and that's a natural, due to the fact that there's become more of a service economy than a purchasing economy, and the state will have to figure that out going forward. I have one other question, this is related to the San Jose Clean Energy portion, I don't, I don't know that you put a slide in there, but the, the goal is to have 100, how many days of, of reserve are we expected to have in the, in San Jose Clean Energy? Is it 180 days, is that correct?
Correct.
So, we're at 168 right now, is that, do we have, are we worried about the, I mean, everything looks great in, in San Jose Clean Energy's numbers, I mean, I'm excited that we're, you know, operating where we are and still offering lower rates for residents, so showing that it's working, but are we a little concerned about that, or is it, is that within a reasonable range at the 168 days?
No, I don't think we're, we're concerned, anybody in Clean Energy can certainly join me here, but I think, you know, the, that fund's health has, has grown considerably over the past few years, so, I mean, we didn't, used to have a reserve at all really, and we had a commercial paper to pay it back. We've since fully paid off that commercial paper loan, and we're now building reserves. So, I think, I would say we're feeling pretty good about where we are in the San Jose Clean Energy Fund.
Okay. I don't know if Lori wants to weigh in on my follow-up question. We had heard, I know we heard in the spring, we had hit our 180-day reserve and that we were starting now to spend on programs. Now, we are a little bit below, do, do we feel this is going to affect our ability to spend on programs going forward? And is there a reason why the number, I think the number had been like 180, 190 million, and now it's 29, it's over 220. Is there a reason why it's, that reserve number has gone up?
Lori Mitchell, Acting EST Director, Director of Energy, and thanks, Councilmember, for the question. So, our reserve target right now is still 180 days. We are evaluating whether we need to grow our reserves beyond that to make sure we can stabilize rates with the varying cost of the PCIA and all of that. We are still on target for that. We hope to end this fiscal year above 180 days, but we'll come back with a report on that, and there's no change in our spending on programs. We'll continue to offer those programs that council approved with the budget this year.
Okay, thank you. Am I remembering wrong in that this, that the number to reach 180 days has grown, or is that just because of the scale of what we're offering and the, and the, and the fact that our operating expenses have grown? Is that, has something occurred in the last few years to increase our, what our target is for 180 days?
Yeah, you are remembering that correctly. The, the main reason that we're considering that is, is one, power supply costs have increased, and so that, that's increased our costs, but also, you know, when we obtained our, our credit rating last spring, the rating agencies, in order to move up in that rating, did want us to achieve higher reserve targets, so it's something we're still evaluating, and we'll bring back to council any updated policy on that, but likely, we will recommend going a little bit above that 180 days.
Okay.
While still maintaining competitive rates and, and offering programs.
Great, thank you so much. That's it for my questions.
All right. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Foley?
Jim, thank you for the presentation. I always like to hear your reports and meet with you, have the one-on-one briefing, I really appreciate the detail that you provide, and as Councilmember Batra said, the confidence that you instill in us, that the numbers are accurate and that you're, you're watching out for us. You know, every year we come up to this point, and we think we're going to have this huge ending fund balance that we'll be able to use and play with, but this is the year we don't, and you, every year, you actually warn us that, be careful about that, depending on that ending fund balance, it's not going to be there, and this year, it's not. So, I, I'm, think this is good early advice for us, or something to think of, of next year, as we look at the budget in '25, '26, and, and the impacts of our, on what's happening in the economy at that time. Just a couple of comments, really, and that's in relation to the personnel increases at the animal shelter, increasing by a staff of four, and then also, including the leadership staff on the road to 2026. That road to 2026, bringing in when the Super Bowl will be in Santa Clara and, and the World Cup will be to, in Santa Clara, but have a huge impact on the city of San Jose, that could be an economic boon for us, and so, we need to make sure that we take advantage of that in getting someone, a team in place, a high-power team who can really move the needle on, on awareness and activities and events, and everything that we need to, to gain public awareness that we're going to be ground zero for FIFA when it comes to, to the city of San Jose. I think that's really insightful and brilliant, and with that, that's, those are my only comments, I just wanted to highlight those two things. Thank you.
Great, appreciate that. Vice Mayor, come in.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, and your team for your presentation and all your hard work. I know it takes a lot to get to where you are today, so I just wanted to publicly, publicly say thank you. I know you mentioned the correcting of the technical issues, you know, as you go through this process, and that it sounded like you had mentioned when Councilmember Batra talked about, you know, changes, the encumbrances of 7.6 will happen sort of in the next budget cycle, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the other thing I heard, and I just want to clarify on the affordable housing, does affordable housing pay property tax? Because I heard you say that they pay construction taxes, but do they pay property taxes?
I believe they do not pay property taxes.
They do not? Okay. And then, I too am delighted that investments now for the future on the road to 2026 is going to be critical, and just, you know, wondering, is that in any way in jeopardy or anything like that, or in this next cycle, we will ensure that we have a, a good team, because I think that you have to invest in order to be able to get to where you want to be by then, so I'm also a little bit concerned about that.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we have council direction to go forth and make this a successful event for San Jose, and so, you know, that's the direction that we are moving under. Every budget process, council has the ability to change that, that direction, but right now, we're operating under the assumption that we need to continue that.
Great, great. Well, thank you so much.
Great. Great, thanks, Vice Mayor. Thanks again for the presentation and answering all of our questions on the City Manager's Annual Report. We have a motion and a second. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote. Okay, thank you. We're now onto item 3.4, which is the Encumbrances Audit Report of a Brief Staff Presentation when Joe and his team are ready.
Good afternoon, Juror City Auditor. I'm here with Allison Polly for our audit on encumbrances. Departments should regularly review all encumbrances to ensure timely liquidation. Also in the box are Drew Corbett and Victor Lowe from the Finance Department. I'm going to turn it over to Ally to walk through the findings and then Drew and Victor have the administration's response to talk through some of the work to date.
Good afternoon, I'm Allison Polly from the Office of the City Auditor. I'm going to start with a brief background. An encumbrance is an amount of money that is set aside to pay for the estimated expense for contracted goods or services. It's a budgetary tool to ensure that funds are available to pay invoices when needed. In fiscal year '24, '25, the general fund had $84.5 million reserved for encumbrances. This is about 5% of the overall general fund uses. The city policy manual includes an encumbrance policy. The purpose of the policy is to ensure the timely liquidation of encumbrances. In the policy, departments are required to liquidate encumbrances six months after the term of the agreement ends or when the encumbrance is no longer needed. Liquidating encumbrances releases those funds to pay for other city needs on a one-time basis. This is why it's important to have ongoing monitoring and prompt liquidation of encumbrances when they're no longer needed. Our report had two findings. The first finding was that city staff should review expired and unused encumbrances. More than a third of all encumbrances in the city's operating funds were not used within the previous fiscal year or they related to purchase orders or contracts that had expired. Based on our audit review, we found that 1,300 older encumbrances may not still be necessary or were inaccurately reported in the reporting tool from the financial management system. We estimated that these encumbrances total up to $30 million. This includes encumbrances for purchase orders that were at least six months expired as of June 2024, encumbrances that were created two or more years ago that had no recorded activity in the most recent fiscal year, and it also includes encumbrances that were two or more years old that had no recorded spending or no recorded activity at all. I want to note that this data is the best available, but the standard report does have some inaccuracies that we will cover when we talk about the second finding. Additionally, some of these encumbrances may still be valid. These estimates that you see here are based on our audit review. City staff have begun the process of reviewing these encumbrances as well as more recent encumbrances and liquidating when possible. Finance will discuss the actual liquidation in their response and these totals were included in their supplemental memo. During our audit, we reviewed a limited sample of older encumbrances by working with department staff to look into the details further. Of the 28 encumbrances we reviewed with staff, 21 of them needed to be liquidated and that totaled $950,000. Five of the encumbrances had already been liquidated and were included in the financial management system report erroneously. Only two, which totaled $109,000, were still valid. We had one recommendation in this finding, which was that the administration should immediately require departments to review encumbrances to liquidate or correct as needed. Our second finding was that consistent monitoring and accurate reporting tools would facilitate the timely liquidation of encumbrances. We noted that some department fiscal staff were not aware of the city's encumbrance policy. Further guidance to staff and requiring regular reviews of encumbrances at the end of the fiscal year would improve encumbrance management. We recommended updates to training and to the city's encumbrance policy to address these issues. Additionally, the primary reporting tool on encumbrances from the financial management system has inaccuracies. This includes inaccurate encumbrance balances, missing dates, and also the inclusion of some canceled encumbrances. Reporting errors like these make monitoring encumbrances more difficult for city staff. We recommend updating the report to fix these problems or to create a new report on encumbrances. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Joe.
Thanks, Ally. So overall, our audit report has five recommendations. We wanted to thank the Finance Department, Information Technology Department, the City Manager's Budget Office for their time and insight during the process. I'm going to turn it over to Drew Corbett for the administration's response now and then we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe and Ally. So the Finance Department agrees with the findings and the recommendations from the Office of the City Auditor. We have already begun the process of implementation of these recommendations. We expect all recommendations to be implemented by the end of the current fiscal year. However, we have already made significant progress on liquidating a number of encumbrances. We started with what we called the Phase One of the liquidation, which focused on encumbrances that were either had expired six months or more before or encumbrances with no expiration date that had no activity over the last six months. The total number of those encumbrances was 3,850 in that universe and almost all of them were reviewed and considered for liquidation of that amount. Almost 53% had either a full or partial liquidation totaling nearly $30 million of encumbrance liquidations, 7.6 million of which was attributable to the general fund. We have, we are working on the second phase of the encumbrance review at this point, which consists of all outstanding encumbrances with a focus on those that were closed or expired as of June 30th, 2024 and we expect to have those results prepared for the mid-year budget February 2025. And additionally, we've also completed the implementation of Recommendation 3B, which was to identify and communicate the points of contact with the departments to ensure that they have the resources that they needed in order to execute the liquidation of their encumbrances. Additionally, we are actively working with the IT Department and our reporting vendor to get the remaining balance report corrected so that it is accurate for the departments to be able to report and liquidate their encumbrances as necessary. That concludes my staff's response.
Great. Thank you both for the audit and the staff response. Let's see if we have any public comment. No public comment on this item? Okay, come back to the council. See if we have any hands up. Councilwoman Batra?
Thank you very much for that audit. And as at the C D, I'd asked some questions about it. I'm going to ask the similar questions again. These encumbrances, what's the oldest one you found during your audit? The one which should have been liquidated? Any idea?
There were some very old encumbrances. This is testing my memory, but there were definitely some from the early 2000s that were included. But I want to make sure it's clear that some of the oldest ones were very small. There was just a small amount of money left. But there were some that were very old.
Okay. And when you liquidate these encumbrances, these will become the funds available to the general fund for next year, right?
So for those encumbrances within the general fund, yes, they would fall to fund balance. A significant amount of the liquidations were in some of the other operating funds that are served different purposes so they wouldn't fall to the general fund. And that would have been the 20, well, 22 million?
But we already have our budget, so this will basically be sitting as a separate surplus or, right? These don't get allocated to anything automatically because they, they were basically the funds put aside.
I'm going to ask Jim, who's in the box, to kind of talk about the budgetary implications if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, so to answer your question, yes, so they would require separate council action to appropriate those funds to a new action. So we would bring those, so those would, you know, in the normal way of doing it, those would fall to our ending, ending fund balance and then be available as beginning fund balance for the '25, '26 budget process.
And what's the optimistic estimate of how much we may find in this so-called magical money?
At this point, we don't have, we don't have an estimate. We went, we went through the old, the oldest of the encumbrances first, the ones that had either already expired or the ones that had no activity within the last six months. And so we think we've captured a great deal of the initial liquidations. With that said, there's still thousands of encumbrances to go through and, and either liquidate or remain as encumbered. But it's difficult to present an estimate for what that might look like. But that's what we'll come back with in February with the final number.
Thank you. You expect to clean up whatever this is before our next budget's time, right?
Yes, as part of, so the current effort is to, you know, clean up old encumbrances and ensure everything that can be liquidated is liquidated. That will provide, you know, potentially, as Jim had mentioned, $7.6 million for the following year's budget and then whatever else comes from the second phase of the liquidation process. And then on an ongoing basis, we expect to be current with the liquidation review process as part of the year-end close. So there may be some additional funds each year, but that should be a relatively small amount because we'll be not having older stale encumbrances that have been sitting around for a long period of time.
But this one seems to be, the timing is really a good timing for us when we are looking at a possibly a deficit of the budget, finding this money which has been sort of reserved for us in places, spread around. And so I think, Joe, what triggered this audit?
So initially got on my radar a few years back in talking with a member of the public who had reached out to my office to better understand the budget and walking through. I noticed the reserve and just kept an eye on it over the years. And then I talked with the previous finance director and assistant finance director about, you know, the process and just determined it was a good time for us to take a look.
Thank you. I think this is a great timing when we really need every dollar for balancing our budget, finding this kind of money which is allocated but not needed or not required. So this was a great time for doing this audit and finding this money. I know you're going to fix the system in future. We're not going to have this one-time gains, right, which will be good and bad, okay? So thanks for the timing of the budget and finding this money without affecting our services and releasing some money for next year when we need every dollar, okay? Good timing and thank you, thank you to the department for accepting all the recommendations to clean up for the future, okay? So Joe, keep finding such audits where we don't hurt anything and still find some money, okay?
Thank you.
Motion to accept the report, sorry.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment and maybe get your take on this because I think that encumbrances do have a place and there's nothing wrong with having an encumbrance. So I don't want the message getting out there saying that, oh, you know, if you have this money, you better use it or lose it, right? Because I think that that causes sometimes decisions that perhaps are not as keen. So I just, I just want to ensure that, you know, there is a place for encumbrances and if you've identified something that's going to be done in, you know, the next fiscal year, I know that it can carry over and all of that. So there's nothing wrong with that. It's just a matter of, you know, it's not a situation of, oh, you better hurry up and use it before the end of the fiscal year or else you're going to lose it. So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Absolutely right. Encumbrances serve a very important purpose in terms of, for departments or the organization probably to manage the budget. But like any process, it needs to be managed, it needs to be monitored. And that's, you know, what this audit was all about. And the whole second finding is about improving those processes. So keep a handle on things moving forward.
Great. All right, I don't see any other hands. We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Great. Thank you all. All right, run to item 3.6, Actions Related to the West San Carlos Street Urban Village Streetscape Improvements Project. I don't believe we have a staff presentation, so we'll go to public comment first, if we have any.
I have no cards.
Okay, coming back to the council.
Move approval.
Great. Not seeing any other hands. Tony, let's vote on 3.6.
Motion passes 9-0.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're on to item 8.1, Citywide Planning Activities Semiannual Status Report. We do have a staff presentation on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Ruth Gueto, Principal Planner with P V C E. With me today is Martina Davis, Division Manager, and our Department Director, Chris Burton. Today we're presenting on the Citywide Teams Work Plan Update. Citywide is the department's long-range planning team and includes teams like the General Plan Team, which is responsible for the general plans, maintenance, and updates; the Housing Team, responsible for implementation of the housing element; ordinance and policy, which maintains the city's ordinances; the Urban Village and Station Area Planning Groups; Special Projects Team, that currently oversees the S B 1333 rezoning work plan. We also house the Destination Home Planner, a grant-funded position that focuses on processing affordable, 100% affordable entitlements. We are currently fully staffed, 19 members, not including our deputy director, which that position is currently vacant. So over the summer, we began thinking through our team's work plan, considering changes to the Customer Service Charter and how we present our work to city council and to the public. We would typically look at work plans across one to two years, but coming out of the tremendous effort that was the housing element update, we decided to take a longer view of the work plan. One of our major efforts currently underway is the Tri-Element Update, looking at policies related to environmental justice, safety, and open space. Once that work is done, the team will shift to the next general plan four-year review, another multi-year process, and that review will look at planned jobs and jobs-to-employed-residence goals, environmental indicators, as well as affordable housing needs. We also anticipate having to add additional residential housing capacity in the general plan during that time in anticipation and preparation for the seventh-cycle housing element. We've updated the way we show our work in the Customer Service Charter, shifting from full-time equivalency to hours, more of a consultant model, and that, we think that helps us better capture the cost of producing this work. You'll see in the next few slides that a lot of our work capacity is spoken for. Some of this is implementing the six-cycle housing element work plans and policies. We also have ongoing urban village planning work across the next seven years. A new approach to our work plan is to categorize our work as either state-mandated or city priorities. State-mandated are those that we are required to do per state law, for example, the housing element policy and programs updates. And city priorities are those directed by council. Equally important, like legislative review and ordinance updates, but these usually have some more flexibility in terms of deadlines. And with that, I'll hand it over to Martina.
Okay, so this is what the new Citywide Planning Customer Service Charter dashboard looks like. On the left, you will see On the left, you will see information on our active workload, so the number of active projects we have, the number of hours we have in any given month, and the hours we've committed to work in any given month. So you'll see right now slightly overcommitted. On the right is our future workload through fiscal year, the 30, 31, yeah. And you'll see that we've got about 19,000, about 20,000 hours a year and already almost 80,000 hours' worth of work that we've identified through the fiscal year. So taking a closer look at that future workload by fiscal year, again, you can see it here, the pink being the state-mandated items, the gray being the city priorities. I'll, I'll speak quickly on those two lines. So the 1968 is the yearly productive hours based on our current 19 staff members. I'll mention that that is highly dependent on the budget. So we included this red line showing the general fund yearly projected hours. About 63% of our staff capacity is actually funded through development fees. So that can fluctuate as, you know, the development industry changes. So you'll see that the general fund covers not even our mandatory items. So just something to think about. And again, getting into a little bit more detail on this upcoming work, so we'll show you, again, this fiscal year, we're already fully committed. So we, we have 102% of our capacity committed through next June. And next fiscal year, we're actually already 72% committed between those state mandatory items and city initiatives that we have identified or council has directed us to do. And again, just going out further years, right? It goes down, but even in these out-years, even through, this goes through 2930, we're already almost half-committed with mostly mandatory work. So again, just one more level of detail. If you want to know the city priorities, some of the ones that we're working on this fiscal year, Billboard Policy 64 Update, the Pleasant Hills Guiding Principles, which was just adopted by council last week, Super Graphics Update for those 2026 events, and the Coyote Memorial Quarter are ones we're working on currently. Next fiscal year, again, we're already half-committed with state-mandated work. The 18% of our capacity we have committed right now to city priorities include zoning updates for the smoke and vape shops, special event permitting, aligning agriculture zoning with the county, and, and there's a couple more items on that list. Another thing I want to mention is that this is the work we have identified now. So things continue to come up. One thing that's sort of lurking that is likely to add a decent body of work to our work plan is the Transit-Oriented Communities Compliance. That's a policy out of MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, that they will be tying future transportation funding to ensuring we have certain land-use policies in place, including minimum densities and certain parking requirements around our transit stations. So we're still wrapping our heads around the workload that could be involved in that. Another example of things that come up is, as you probably know, the state constantly changes laws on us. So there's a constant, unknowable amount of zoning changes that we typically have to do every year based on state law changes that can be difficult to predict. And with that, that concludes our presentation, so we are happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Tony, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Coming back to the council then, see if we have any hands up. We'll go to Councilmember Batra first.
Thank you for the presentation. Chris, I have a clarification to get. I was at one of the community meetings recently and I received a criticism for our planning department saying that the planning department is a profit center and city is not making enough profit out of it. Educate us a little.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building Code Enforcement. I've, I've heard similar things. I think the, the actual intent is that PBCE is a potential revenue generator for the city. Obviously, you know, as far as the budget's concerned, one of the biggest proportions of general fund contribution comes from property tax. And given state law in California, the only way to really increase property tax is to modify existing buildings or build new ones. So absolutely, we're an important part of the future fiscal health of the city, which is why we often bring a fiscal lens to some of the land-use conversations that we have. As, as far as direct revenues through fees, we run cost recovery, so we're definitely not a profit center from that perspective.
Would it be accurate to describe it most as a cost recovery center than a profit center?
So operationally, we are a cost recovery operation. That's correct.
Okay. All right. And I, I appreciate you having a look for the longer term, not just for one year, because a lot of the planning activities are erratic in a way. And keeping the staff adjusted to that level, I think it's a pretty difficult task. So appreciate what you're doing and some of the efficiencies you have brought into your work. On the code enforcement part of it, how are we handling our code enforcement because, especially when we have those tier-one, tier-two, tier-threes? I've heard from some of the community members that it's not clear to them what will make them go from tier-two to tier-one. Because as you know, that in my district, I've been trying to get all these mom-pops to get their properties from tier-three to tier-two, tier-one. And at the last meeting I attended with them, they were saying it's not very clear to them what makes them a tier-two to a tier-one. Is there some kind of a published literature available or some kind of a presentation can be arranged with these people to help them understand?
Yeah, Councilmember, there's certainly more outreach that we're happy to do. We can organize a follow-up. And then we'll be including this as a part of the study session in December on code enforcement, where we can drill in a little bit more on the multifamily program that you're referring to.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to seek your help to get most of them at least move a notch up in their tier levels. Okay? I make a motion to accept the report.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Florence Jors.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Obviously, when you're at 102% of what you're supposed to do, it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's difficult. And given that you had that one chart where you had the series of, oh, we're already committed way into the future, it seems like there's a lot more work and continues to be so, even though I know that many of the new applications have not, you know, generated the, the revenue necessary to keep things going as quickly. And, and I'm just wondering, have there been other sort of paradigms out there in, in, throughout the nation or whatever, who, who funds, you know, building, planning and building differently? Because I think that this, you know, as you see, is not sustainable. And then you sort of get it, it's sort of feast or famine, right? And then when there's so much work and you're having to go outside to be able to get those additional people to, to assist when you're, when you're sort of drowning in it, I, I'm just wondering if this is a time to take a look at what other ways or what other structures do other, do other departments, other planning departments use to be able to at least sort of even out, balance out, I don't know, you know, some of the work? And maybe there's some work that can be looked at differently. I don't know. I just feel that it's, it's, we always get the complaints. Oh, you're too slow, you're too slow, you're not doing it, you know, da-da-da. But, but at the same time, you know, given your work plan right now, you're never going to catch up, right? Because you're sort of in this cycle. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's been anything out there that can look differently? Because there needs to be something, some change of some sort.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And yet, we'll, we'll never catch up. It's the nature of the job, but that's how we like it. I think there's a couple of parts to that. So one, yes, absolutely, there are other cities that have different structures around how they support their long-range policy work through a variety of different sort of avenues. So I think there are other cities that have looked at that. I think the one sort of major caveat I'll put on this that has really changed significantly for us over the last, you know, five slightly more years, when we adopted the general plan back in 2011, you know, the plan was to, you know, look at all of the various different facets in our general plan, all of the planning we did, and then sort of use the urban village process as a means of continuing that planning agenda by looking at individual areas on an ongoing basis. Now, we knew that that would require additional capacity on our team, so, you know, we actually increased what was at the time a general planned update fee that's charged across all development. And so that's what's paying for that sort of 60% gap. What's changed significantly over those last five years is the introduction of new changes and new mandates from the state. So all of that capacity that we built in the system to allow us to do the planning work we knew we needed to do has been consumed by a lot of those changes at the state level. And as a result, we're sort of falling behind on some of the other work we would typically do. And so, so that's the big shift. So when, when we started this work to really kind of look at this path forward, this is really a path to 2031, because that's when our next housing element will be due, right? We know that we're going to have to start that process two to three years in advance, so we don't end up in the same place we're in now because the state changed the law on us again on how we process the housing element, and all of a sudden we had 30 Builders' Remedy projects that are causing havoc with our land-use process. So we're trying to get ahead of that. Now, ahead of that, we know that we don't currently have enough residential capacity in the general plan if HCD decides that we're going to have to provide space for even more housing, right? So that means we need to update our general plan EAR. There's at least two years' worth of work in that. So I'm already backing up five years from 2031 from there. And that's, you know, a year and a half away. So, so this is really what we're trying to do, is make an assessment of all the work that's out there, especially driven by changes in state law and new state mandates, so we can set priorities within the department and give the city council a realistic view of what's coming and what capacity we have left. Because I know there's, you know, an explicit interest in continuing to refine our process, you know, some of the policy work we'll bring before the end of the year is really aimed at driving our process, you know, much more efficiently, you know, as we look at different ways to explore housing production throughout the city. But all of that gets put to the wayside at some point because we have to meet these other requirements. You know, we're, right now, we're writing, we're updating two general plan updates. We're writing a new environmental justice element in the general plan. This is all work that wasn't necessarily planned for when we established the, the sort of operational structure of the team.
Yeah. I, I guess, you know, when I hear Martina talk about the transportation plan and how you have to have a plan or else you're not eligible for some grants, you know, it's sort of like, it, it's tough because you, you want to be able to be eligible for these grants so that you can do the work, so that, you know, I mean, it's sort of like chicken and the egg, right? So I just, I just feel that, you know, perhaps as we're looking at the next budget cycle, how, you know, how things can be done a little bit differently. And I know it's tough because of all the mandates, but at the same time, they're not going to stop. So.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. So, you know, based on the presentation, it appears we're spending the majority of our time on state-mandated work that may or may not facilitate housing, jobs, investment in our community. And while I'm in favor of fair rules being applied to all cities to ensure that everyone's doing their part, my sense is that the state often engages in a form of centralized planning that doesn't always result in the outcomes that our community needs. And so I'm curious how your department is aligning with and informing the work of our intergovernmental relations team to ask the state for reprieve for requirements that are not actually driving outcomes and to help inform the state of the impact that their mandates are having on our ability to do any other work that might actually unlock housing supply, for example.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We work very, very closely with intergovernmental relations. Typically, myself and Jared actually do the, the bulk of that work for our team. So yeah, we regularly are in contact with the legal cities, with individual state legislators. We definitely have influenced some bills in certain areas. We, we have mixed success, right? The state has decided that cities are the problem in a lot of ways, you know? So we definitely do make our voices heard as a large city that has a pretty good reputation in Sacramento. We, we can get somewhere, but again, I would say mixed success, but it is something that we spend a, a good amount of time doing.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. I would also suggest that we might want to extend that education to nonprofit partners who are deeply engaged in policy and advocacy work and sometimes, I think, may not fully understand the extent to which state mandates are driving a lot of paperwork, a lot of compliance, versus getting to the heart of how we unlock housing supply. So I am curious to that point. With the limited capacity we do have, how do you all think about and ensure that we're prioritizing council-directed policies and the programs and policies in the housing element that we believe are most likely, talking about highest ROI here, most likely to drive investment in the jobs and housing that we need?
Yeah, so that, that is our ultimate priority. When we look at especially market rate housing production over the last five years, it's, you know, effectively dropped off a cliff in 2024 to date. We've not issued any new building permits for market rate multifamily housing, and it's unlikely that anything will get through in the next two months that would change that number. So, you know, our, our biggest focus is how do we really address those issues? I think we've done a lot, both internally from a process standpoint and from a policy standpoint. We're taking those next steps. We intend to be in front of council before the end of the year with a, a policy that allows for ministerial approvals. And that is the ultimate streamlining, right? It's sort of taking something like SB 35 one step further so we can continue to advance multifamily housing throughout the city. So absolutely the case. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, it's always a balancing act, and I think this is why we wanted to go through this process in particular, is to give council a little bit more insight for your consideration as other policy pieces come forward. So, you know, when we look at sort of that, that small percentage that's sort of city priority versus state mandate, obviously, we know that 2026 is foremost in that list because it's under a time constraint. We know that there's work we want to do around super graphics there. As I said, ministerial approval for housing development. Obviously, the, the work that was, there's some work that's already underway that has been time-crunched because of other things coming along, so the housing element taking longer than expected. So things like the Monterey Corridor work has been ongoing for some time, and again, is sort of in that, that small percentage because we're just trying to get it over the goal line at this point to free up more space for other policy priorities that sit behind it, because there's a cost to putting things down and then sort of having to come back to them and pick them back up again.
Yeah, switching cost. And then you mentioned that we haven't had any multifamily approvals. What, what are you projecting in terms of volume of applications? I know it's impossible to know for sure, but I ask because we have a citywide planning fee that's supposed to help facilitate our work on these policies. I'm just curious, I guess the point is with, with what I think may be lower volume, if that's correct, how are you thinking about the budget and staffing levels that you'll have to not only complete the state-mandated work you've outlined, but the city-prioritized work?
Yeah, and so if I can just go back on the slides for a sec. That one slide that had the chart with the two lines on it is exactly sort of that point. So right now, and again, you know, the, the nature of our work often falls this way, that, you know, we went on an aggressive hiring strategy to ensure that we were filling all the positions we had in the budget and available. And we filled all those positions right as development started to decline and slow down. And so now we're sort of facing that challenge in our years. Essentially, we run Fund 239, which is the gap above the lower dotted line up to the top one, sort of just represented in, in sort of hours available by staff labor.
Sorry, I didn't follow that. Represented by what?
So it, it's represented by hours available, productive hours essentially, in staff labor. So that, that's that fee, right, that's added on.
That's the 7,100 yearly projected hours in the general fund?
The, sorry, no, the, the delta between the, the 7,100 is what the general fund pays for. So we get general fund money into citywide planning.
And then the fee is what's on?
So the fee is the delta, so about 12,000 hours that go on top of that.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
So we've been building a reserve, so the intent in a general plan update fee is a So the intent in a general plan update fee is that you build a reserve so that as policy work comes along and as you need to do those bigger four-year reviews, that the resources are available in Fund 239 to draw down against those. Where we've added a lot of this state mandated work and where we've added other policy priorities, quite often what will happen through the budget process is we're allocating funds out of 239 to cover. It's not just staff time, there's also SEQA and consultant costs. So something like the Pleasant Hills work that we just completed, right? That's, I can't remember the exact number, it's somewhere around 250,000 out of that pot. So we're depleting that fund as we move forward. So we're going to have to look at that, you know, as we get into the next budget cycle and beyond as to sort of how that impacts. And essentially, what that means is that top line will come down. So the available sort of productive hours will reduce, which will continue to put pressure on how much capacity we have to do additional work.
Right. So depending on how that goes, we may not be able to add much to the gray that we have there today.
Yeah.
That's already been planned.
And part of the intent of really sort of drilling down on this, so in the past, we've typically done this work by looking at FTEs, at full-time equivalent employees, which is certainly not an exact science, it's a bit of a ballpark. So we're trying to get much more in-depth and in detail so we can make more informed decisions on how we plan this work. And then also, as we're doing workload assessments, you know, whether it's through the rules process on new policy objectives or if we're responding to council's interest in new policy objectives here, we can give you a more accurate impact sort of based on this analysis. So this is part of our ongoing operational shift so we can monitor these, so we can see what's coming, we can make decisions ahead of time and hopefully avoid difficult decisions in the future.
Yeah, appreciate that you're doing this analysis. Well, I'll look forward to supporting the IGR work that I know you all will inform, see what we can do, if anything, to lessen some of the state mandates or simplify or streamline them in some way. And then I'm sure you'll keep coming back to us to help us understand the trade-offs that we're making in terms of which body of work you're pursuing and which are getting shifted out to future years. Okay. We had comments from a few colleagues. Let me see if anyone has added their name. Looks like Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I'm sorry, missed your presentation. I was over at the county for the Blue Zones item over there. But I wanted to make sure I understood, I didn't see it in, in the presentation for today, but I, I see that it's in the presentation of a fuller discussion about, the presentation for CED, a fuller discussion about urban villages. So do I understand correctly that the only urban village plans that you're working on right now were, have been already underway? You're not undertaking any new ones until you kind of take another look at that process? Is that correct?
Yeah. So we have three urban village plans underway. Two of them are kind of at the very beginning stages. So we have Five Wounds, which is nearing the end, the combined Five Wounds Plan, and then Saratoga Urban Village and Eastside Alum Rock Urban Village. Yeah. Yeah, so those will take us probably out a year and a half to a couple of years. And during that time, we'll start that analysis on the urban village planning process. And we're definitely doing these ones with that in mind, you know, where are there opportunities to change and streamline throughout this kind of more traditional urban village process?
So I'd, I'd like to suggest, since you came to us with over 100%, and you, I think, are asking for us not to just accept this, but to give us, to give you our comments, is that correct? Okay. I see a nod from Chris, so I'm taking that as a yes, you want to hear what I have to say. I think it would be wise to review the current urban village plans and to see what development has happened or is even in the pipeline for those current urban village plans before you move forward with any of the others that are in the beginning stages. I think that makes more sense in terms of, I understand you have a consultant on boarded and you have a consultant RFP closed, but we don't, we don't have to utilize all, we don't have to spend those dollars and we don't have to spend that time. I would suggest, given that I have a number of urban village projects in my district, most of which haven't gone really any projects done, and a few that only just have a few, maybe one or two projects in the pipeline, I would suggest that this has not been the strategy that back in 2010, 11, we, we, our predecessors anticipated it would, and that we don't have 70 or even a dozen Santana rows in, in the city of San Jose because that lightning didn't strike twice. And, and I don't know that that's the way for us to move forward with our development. So I would, I guess I would ask, is, can we meet our housing element requirements without doing urban village plans in a, in a better streamlined way that takes much less work?
Yes, so some amount of the urban village planning work is, was included or baked into some of the housing element work, certainly not the whole thing, but there's some anticipation that will advance some of those plans. But that's only a portion of it. I mean, you know, 62,000 units over the next eight years or next seven years at this point is going to be difficult to meet regardless. I think the biggest opportunity areas will likely be those areas that already have plans approved or other growth areas like North San Jose and downtown. So that, that's really where we're probably looking to see significant gains. So I definitely take the point, I think there's, there's definitely a conversation that needs to be had about how we approach urban villages, I think, as we approach another four-year review, probably in about 2026, I would suggest. That, that's a great time to have that conversation on kind of what the future of urban villages look like, how we can sort of continue to affect that process so that it is more efficient. There's definitely some work, again, that we included in the housing element that sort of looks to streamline this, where we've adopted citywide guidelines and standards for design. We're currently working on a process that will look at standardized mitigations for SEQA. All of these things, in theory, should compress that, that issue, right? Where we don't have to look at each of these as individual plans, is that we can just create a framework and say, this applies to all. And maybe there are some sort of smaller modifications around sort of specific colors on the map, on specific sites that we change, but generally speaking, here's the plan, like what are the, just the edits rather than writing a new plan each time?
Yeah, I, I fully support that. I do think also, one of the, one of the main drawbacks of the urban village plans is it's good to go out and get community input on those plans, but there's a lot of agitation when, when you go out and say, and you put those colors on the board because people think they're going to happen like that. And they, they don't necessarily even happen at all. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of community education that has to go around that and a lot of engagement that has to go with each of those plans. And I just think it's not, because we haven't seen those realized, I mean, the first urban village plans were with District One, the, the first three that, when I was here, and it was a huge, long before-me process, engagement process. And the number of projects that have come out of those three, it was a tri-village three plans, is maybe half a dozen. I mean, Jared would have probably known better than I would, but maybe half a dozen out of three plans and we, I know the Pulte homes are open and that's maybe it. I just, I just don't think we've gotten the bang for the buck. And if you were looking for what should we not be doing, I would say the urban village plans are what you should just, just put it down and focus your, focus your resources on quicker wins. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate that perspective, and I think it's certainly not planned out as, as past councils had hoped in the community. So I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Please remind, we've had a robust discussion. Did we have a motion? I think we might have, from Councilmember Batra to kick off. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay. We've one more item that may be heard before 6:00 PM. That is Item 10.2. This is a text amendment to the general plan. And I believe Ruth is kicking us off. All right.
I'll get us started. Good afternoon. Ruth Gueto, Principal Planner with the Citywide Team. And I also have my colleagues from the airport supervising planner Ryan Shealan and planner John Wilson. We're here to discuss the general plan text amendment for a proposed modified airport influence area and other associated text changes. So some background on the work that has been done so far and why we're here today. A major amendment to the airport master plan was adopted by city council in April of 2020, which included, among other things, plans to update airport facilities, updated aviation demand forecasts, and new noise contours based on forecasts. After the airport master plan was adopted, from April 2020 to December 2022, the Santa Clara County Airport Land Use Commission, also known as ALUC, started work on updating their, their plan for this airport and the airport influence area, AIA, to reflect changes to the San Jose adopted master plan. The California Public Utilities Code requires that the ALUC plan be based on the airport master plan. However, when the ALUC released their draft plan, the ALUC had inflated the aircraft operation by 50% and proposed to expand the AIA by, proposed and expanded AIA in San Jose. Between March 2023 and March 2024, city staff met with ALUC and county staff six times and sent several letters detailing the city's issues with their draft plan, such as aircraft operation numbers, the inflated noise contours, and the expanded AIA. Additionally, the city provided the ALUC with a report by HNTB Corporation, an aviation consulting firm, which analyzed the airport's long-term aircraft operations forecast in the airport master plan that found the forecast to be on target. Caltrans Aeronautics sent the ALUC a letter agreeing with the city's approach to use the airport master plan data for the amended ALUC plan and the AIA. In March of 2024, the ALUC adopted their plan with the 50% inflated noise contours and expanded airport influence area against the objections of the city. The city's main concerns with the noise contours and AIA in the San Jose-Manetta Airport Land Use compatibility plan are foremost that the ALUC did not follow the Public Utilities Code, which states that their plan and the AIA should be based on the airport master plan. The ALUC assumed an unsubstantiated 50% increase in operations, aircraft operations when calculating the noise contours for the airport. These inflated noise contours were then utilized to create an expanded AIA in San Jose. This expanded AIA would add an additional 240 acres of land to the AIA in San Jose. If the ALUC adopted AIA were utilized by the city, these additional 240 acres would need to be referred to the ALUC for a determination of consistency with their plan for any general plan amendments, rezonings, municipal and building code updates. This referral process can add several months to the timeline of a project. It also means extra costs for both privately or city-initiated projects. For reference, the map above depicts the prior airport influence area in green, the ALUC adopted AIA in red, and the proposed modified AIA in blue. There are lines that overlap in many areas, but you can see that the AIA shrunk, the one that the city is proposing, on the west and north boundaries because we do have quieter aircraft and the removal of a runway. There is an expanded AIA in the southern boundaries. The city is not disputing the changes in the north or west, just those in the south. These two maps depict the area where there is a difference between the ALUC adopted AIA and the proposed modified AIA. One area includes part of downtown and the part of the area included in the Diradon Station Area Plan. The other area is south of downtown and includes residential and industrial uses. The general plan text amendment proposes a modified AIA, which we, which would be represented in the general plan and the Diradon Station Area Plan with updated maps. Additionally, to provide consistency and clarity, the text changes will use consistent naming convention for the airports in San Jose, update the language to differentiate between the ALUC adopted AIA from the city-approved modified AIA, and includes a section that provides background and justification for the modified AIA. If the general plan text amendment and overrule are approved by the city council, the city of San Jose will utilize a modified AIA to determine which projects will be referred to the ALUC for consistency determination with the ALUC plan. And these final slides include the recommendation for the overrule and the general plan text amendment. And we're here if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. Tony, do we have any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay. Turning to my colleagues, we'll start with Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. I'm just going to briefly say it's frustrating that we don't have alignment on this and that we have to take this action to overrule, but I will make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Motion passes 10-0.
Great. Thank you all. Okay. So we have a few items that were agendized to not be heard before 6:00 PM. That's Items 7.1, 10.3, and 10.4. So we will recess until 6:00 PM, take up those three items, and then do open forum before adjournment. Thank you.